Meeting is now recording and I'll call the meeting to order at 1:14. Those attending in person, I think you've all signed the attendance sheet, so thank you. Those attending via go-to-meeting, please edit your listing if you haven't already to list your name. It looks like we have Amy from Lake County, Ann, and Maggie, Darlene, Deanna Noel, Faith Adams, Linda Stahl, Mary Lou Martin, and one that's maybe a ghost login waiting for a name. All right. And also for those people on go-to-meeting, please keep your microphone muted except when speaking. We do have a quorum I've already determined, so we'll review the agenda, which I sent out this morning. Sorry for that being late, the final version of that. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none. That agenda will stand as written. And the minutes from May 17th. I did have some edits from what was originally posted by John, and those were included in the meeting packet. Corrected some mistakes on the names and spellings and did a little word-changing here on the additions/deletions from the agenda. The others were just really name corrections and citations for people who made the motion. That was Ann who made that motion to increase the checkouts from 35 to 50. And I enhanced that motion about the Sage sponsorship of the Evergreen Conference.
Bosie, this is Deion. I have two things that I noticed. Under the -- those that are attending, it's UCSLD, not USCLD for us. And on the second to last page, I believe it was Delia that volunteered to be on the nominating committee, not myself.
Okay, thank you.
Also, Perry, on the President, it says Thomas Library for me. It probably shouldn't say Thomas Library.
Okay. All right, any other changes to the minutes? Any objection to approving the minutes with those corrections?
I agree with you, 30 minutes. For March 17th, 18 minutes.
Oh, you're right. That should be March 7, May 17.
Never mind, I can't.
Well, we'll just do it by acclamation since it's tough to do votes over the go-to-meeting. Again, any objection to passing those March 17 minutes with the corrections? Hearing none. They will stand as amended. Open forum for general membership. Is there anybody who would like to comment on a topic not already on the agenda? All right, hearing none. We'll move on to reports, beginning with Sage staff.
Do you want us to do our presentation now or later?
Presentation on the state of Sage. That is on the agenda. We'll do that later.
Okay. I'm not sure what else to report on because we may be duplicating.
Okay. Well, yeah, just want to do that all together. Great. How about cataloging committee report? Is there anybody from the cataloging committee present?
I'm here. Deion's on the phone. Is Sarah?
Sarah doesn't show as connected.
I can give a quick report. We have a meeting scheduled for next Monday at the cataloging committee, so it's been a good month and a half since we met. But things are going well. Cataloging permissions have all been divvied out. We've changed logins. That seems to be going well. Classes, the original round of classes finished up, and David's working with a few new people who needed training. We have had one regional training already and have another one scheduled for next week, and we're working on cleanup.
Okay, thank you. I did have a couple of things regarding cataloging to pass along. David did report that he had a webinar for doing kits, and he only had one person attend, although that's recorded and available. That is a very low turnout, so not sure if people are not hearing about that or if they're offered at times that are inconvenient, but please give him feedback about the webinar if you can. Also, we found that duplicate records continue to be created. We're really trying to eliminate those, so please be sure to search before you create a record and then search again after you create one to make sure that someone didn't add one at the same time that you're adding one. The cataloging committee is working to come up with some best practices on how to use the parts. We ran into some glitches still, so that is still underway. We found that if there are parts created in a bib, so we just added complete sets to all of the Game of Thrones items, and then a new item is created that doesn't have a part designation, then holds will only really attach to that item without the parts designation because that is the default.
So we need to get parts on the whole record?
Well, parts, we have done that, parts on the whole record, say, in the Game of Thrones, but then if somebody adds a new item--
Oh, and doesn't use parts.
--and doesn't do parts.
So more education is needed on parts.
Yes, so be aware of that. If you do that, if you add an item and don't fill out the part designation, then it really messes up the holds queue. Also, Loria Connor has asked everyone to not delete or change existing series statements since they do, in Harney, list their series on their items, their call numbers. It is important, so you can add additional series statements, but please don't edit or delete the existing ones.
It does. I guess I would qualify and say leave the existing 490 in the record, but if there's an authorized heading that we're trying to group everything underneath, I would change that. Depending, I mean, it all bears down to looking and making sure that it's an authorized heading and so being cautious and, like you said, adding a series heading if it's different than what's in the record.
Okay. Anything else regarding cataloging to discuss while we're on that topic? We'll move on to career. You've had some career meetings?
We have. Nothing earth-shattering out of the career committee meetings other than, you know, we're continuing to work on just getting the courier bags in was a big step so that we could not have a shortage of those. I think we're continuing to just work on procedures, making sure that everybody's using the right labels, that kind of thing. So it's good to be meeting on a regular basis so that we can catch issues as they come up.
Okay, and those who haven't come to the meeting are missing out on getting some new career bags. There's a nice pile here. Development Committee, we just had the Evergreen Conference, and you'll probably cover most of that in your presentation.
I'll just touch on one little point that we'll talk about later, but from that conference through some of the sessions, we're also able to pull in some new ideas that we'll be showcasing later, so something real tangible in the conference as well.
I would suggest that we dedicate some money towards the duplicate displaying of multibranch stuff, but it seems like--
Have you checked it since the upgrading?
It is still there. It's, I put in the bug almost a year ago, and a lot of libraries have put in heat for it, so it's observed.
It's starting to get some interest. Maybe some developers will look at it. It might not have to be that.
Yeah, but yeah, if it does go on for a while, it might be worth poking the process along a little.
I did have some feedback from the children's staff saying the terminology on the children's catalog is confusing for the get-it. I can't remember what else.
Those are things we can change, so getting feedback is great.
Yeah. Financial Statement. Did include the profit and loss statement from our QuickBooks in your packet and also the Sage fund, which our Budget Committee just passed. The outlook for the rest of the year is that revenues are on track and several expenditure lines are underspent, so we should end up with a nice carryover, a little more than we expected. For the budget, for next year, the Budget Committee did make one change in regards to the administrative service fee, which pays for our financial offer, financial officer work. That whole amount for the fiscal agency is 7,600. 7,300 of that pays for our financial officers' time of five hours per week, and then the balance of that is 300 that goes to the district for a small reimbursement for the fiscal agency of 300, and they move that down into the materials and services. So it's no amount changes, just a little bit of a structure change there. And Governance Committee. Cheryl Hancock of Harney County, and I don't think she's here at the meeting in any form, has contacted me about the possibility of adding all Harney County schools to Sage. And I think there are several. There's like six or so.
They're quite small, though.
They're very small. Some are not automated at all. Some are using college or something. But she wants to know the procedure. We've talked about what criteria we might have in the past to add new members and possibly implementing a joining fee, so I think it's probably time we work that out. I'll be calling Governance Committee meeting in June so that we can get started on that process and develop a policy.
Can I also send the Budget Committee?
Budget Committee should probably be a part, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of overlap. So if you are not involved in Governance or Budget Committee currently and would like to be involved in that process, please let me know. Nominating Committee. We'll discuss the nominations for next year's representatives a little later in the meeting. Actually, next. There's no previous business, so we'll move on to the elections part. For circulating schools, Delia Wallace has agreed to serve again. So the committee nominates the slate of folks. For public libraries under 5,000, Mary Reiser of Gilim, Faith Adams of NISSA. Public libraries between 5,000 and 15,000, Erin Wells of Milton-Freewater. Public libraries over 15,000, Marie Baldo. And Linda Stahl for Resource Sharing Partners' Special Libraries, and she'd be re-enlisting. Everyone has agreed to accept the nomination, but will also now take nominations on the floor. If anybody has others they'd like to nominate to run for those positions, please speak up.
Very quiet room.
Yeah, I'm not sure if we're being heard out there. I assume so. Okay, hearing no other nominations. Nominations are closed. We will have a virtual vote sometime in the next three weeks, so please be on the lookout for that. And next up is Darcy Hannigan, our special guest from the Oregon State Library to talk about the Edge Toolkit.
Yeah, a couple minutes to do that, or something for three.
Let's see.
Are you all on virtual, like, just giving that stuff that you need to lock?
Do I need to keep this window open, or can I go ahead and just do stuff? So can the folks online see the presentation okay? Yes, no, maybe? Nope?
I don't see you saying anything. Give us some feedback.
So can someone attending our go-to-meeting let us know if you can see the screen currently?
No, we cannot.
Okay, so we need to share the desktop, I think.
I think it--
That's the camera.
Camera screen.
Excellent. Okay, thank you.
Hello, Ken.
Yay. Okay, so how many of you have heard about the Edge Initiative or anything about it? Okay, not quite half. So this is a really nifty, I'm in love with this thing, let me just put it that way. It's a great online toolkit that is going to help libraries do a self-assessment where you will have the opportunity to go through this checklist and say what you are doing, what you might do, what you're never going to do just because you don't have the resources or it's not a community need. The idea is to understand where you are with your technology programs and services, where you are in establishing community partnerships to help you advance those technology programs and services, and where you are with your staff training around technology programs. Because if you bring in all the technology in the world and all of the databases in the world, but your staff can't help patrons with them, it's not really a great setup. So basically, what this online toolkit does, it's been established, it was set up by, oh boy, the Urban Library Council, PLA, and a couple, I think, a couple others. I can't remember offhand. It went through a pilot beta session and then a pilot last year where libraries could participate for free. We had 11 libraries that were selected as national samples that I begged, begged, begged to complete the assessment, and what their data did was it helped prime the pump as part of a national effort to get data about libraries of all sizes and what they're doing. So there's a bunch of data out there already, and then we had the opportunity to let 15 more libraries participate for free last year. So about 10 of those, I believe, completed the assessment, and they're in various stages of actually doing things based on their assessment. Starting May 1st, the Edge Assessment folks needed to start charging for it, and I'm very pleased to say that the Oregon State Library has agreed to pay for a statewide license. My understanding at this point is that that will be an ongoing thing, so it's not just this year, but should also continue in the next couple of years. And so what this toolkit will help you do is do this assessment. You'll review that assessment. Okay, there's a whole review process. You'll get a report that tells you exactly what you did and how you scored, and then you'll take a look at that and you'll do some planning. You might decide that you're going to do one, you might set one goal based on your results. You might set five. It's really up to you and what you want to do. And then you'll take some action based on those goals. And the online toolkit is there to help you through each of those phases. In addition, this is pretty much my full-time job to help you, all right? So for example, I could come out here today. That's very nice. One of the things to think about as I go through this presentation is if you folks are interested in doing this as a group or as individual or some mix and match. So maybe after you've taken the assessment, all of you have taken the assessment, or most of you who want to do that have taken it, I come back and we kind of, I'll look at all your data. I'll come back and present the results as a group. Meanwhile, you'll also have a chance to take a look at your results as individual libraries, and maybe there's some commonality there. Maybe all the libraries here need to do technology training for their staff, or maybe they all need to do more around providing health resources online, right? So maybe there's some common things that you could work on together as a group or subgroups, right? And then maybe you set one goal that's just for your library. So there, or maybe you decide you don't want to work as a group. There's no right way to do this. I'm not, I'm not here to promote any particular way for you guys to figure out what's going to work best for all of you. Okay? So let's talk about the assessment a little bit. They've broken it down into three strategic areas, all right? So at the very high level, there's community value, and that is how well does your library know what your community needs and how well is it meeting those needs? So you have to know what your community actually needs before you can answer the second question, right? There's engaging the community, and by that, that's a lot of the organizational partnerships. That's working with your elected officials. That's working with anyone who could be a stakeholder or a funder or a partner. Okay? And then the last part is the organizational management, and that kind of covers all the leftover stuff in some ways. That's the piece where the training comes in. It also talks about your bandwidth. Does your library have policies that support the work that you do? Do you share those policies with other libraries so that everybody can benefit? Things like that. Okay? Each of these strategic areas has benchmarks, so they have two or three benchmarks, they're kind of high-level measurements. Under each of those are indicators, and that's where your scores come in. Yes, I'm doing that. No, I'm not doing that. And then activities or, yeah, activities, examples of those things that you could be doing. So it gets pretty specific, so it's very helpful because you don't have to guess, for the most part, what they're asking if you're doing it or not. Okay? Any questions so far? Okay. So what I wanted to do is take you through a benchmark example. You can kind of see how it works. So I picked one, actually, let me do, yeah. So I picked one under community value, and one of the benchmarks is libraries provide programs and services that enable people to get value from their use of technology. Okay, so that's pretty broad, right? That's kind of high level. I'm sorry, yeah. I'm sorry, that was one of the strategic areas under community value. Then under that, there's three benchmarks for that piece. Your library does digital literacy programs and services. It provides digital tools and resources to the community, and it's meeting key community needs around technology. So let's kind of dive down a little bit. So one of the benchmarks is digital literacy, and that is that the libraries are providing assistance and training, right, what we just talked about, with the goal of increasing the level of digital literacy in the community. So, you know, if you really think about that, you better kind of have an idea of where they're at now and where you want them to be and if you actually get there. The indicator for this would be, for example, the library has curricula for and provides regularly scheduled digital literacy training, right? So if you're doing that, you're probably moving towards this goal, even if you don't have a specific number around it. Okay? Some of the activities that indicate that you are working on that goal is that you have curricula or in-person classes that are available in at least one library location on any of these topics. So basic computer skills, which includes learning how to use a mouse. We still have people that have never, you know, played with a computer. Office productivity software, internet searching, all the really basic things, you know, even signing up for a Facebook account to stay in touch with family, right, and relatives and friends and things. Perry, your vision. So the possible answers to each of these indicators or activities is yes, I'm doing this, no, but I plan to. So you know that you're going to be working on this in the next year or three, okay? It's already decided. No, I would like, we would like to, but we're not. And no plans to do so. The key thing here is there is no wrong answer. This is just taking a temperature, right, to seeing where you're at. The thing to realize is whenever you're saying in particular, "no plans to do so," that's a perfectly great answer as long as you know why that is. So for example, if you're in a community that has less than, has almost no children population, I was reading one of the library success stories, 75% of their population is over 30 or something, and there aren't any kids or whatever it was, some weird number, right? So you're not going to do a lot of children technology programs, right, because that just doesn't make any sense. But you need to find out what's going on, you know, that's going to work for your community. All right? Let me, let's see if I can do this. This is not my computer, so give me-- See if I can go here. Oops, had it for a second. There it was, sorry. You like seeing everything flashing by? Okay, let's try this. To kind of give you another view of what this looks like. There on the-- Let me go a little bit bigger. Can you guys, yeah, there we go. So on the right, there are the benchmarks for the community value. So we talked about the digital literacy, tools and resources, meeting community needs. Another strategic area is engaging the community. So again, doing the strategy and evaluation of what's going on in your community, creating the strategic partnerships and sharing best practices around those areas. Okay? And the last one under organizational management, there's quite a few. The planning and policies piece, this is the real internal view of your library, right? So it's not so much what's going on out in your community or who you're working with, but what's going on inside your library. Staff expertise, the number and kinds of devices that you have available for both your staff and your patrons, and the bandwidth you have, how you manage your your staff and your patrons, and the bandwidth you have, how you manage your technology internally. So are you upgrading your PCs or tablets every three to five years, whatever that is for you guys? And technology inclusiveness. Really, that's a lot around making sure that people with disabilities can come in and use your technology, and other kinds of technology too. So you might set up a media lab, for example, okay? So those are all the areas that the Edge covers, Edge Initiative covers. And I wanted to see, it's really nice, when you go online and you click on one of these, you'll see it'll take you right, I'm going to make that a little bit smaller again. You'll see it'll take you to each of the benchmarks and indicators. So that's that first example we just went over. So all of this is online for you to review. And then also, when you actually go through and do the assessment, when you sign up and register, there'll be a link, and you'll get a PDF that you can print, so that you can, you know, if it's easier, sometimes you have to go off and find that data, right? You're going to answer all these questions, you're not going to sit at your computer and do that, you're going to have to kind of take a look and see what's going on. You can fill it out on the PDF and then enter it online. Okay?
Have they provided curriculum for each of those?
Um, what? What they do is they provide, so there's two things around that, that's a good question. So the question was, have they, has the Edge Initiative folks provided curriculum around all of these topics and issues? There's live webinars for training around the strategic areas. And those, there's usually four to six per quarter on the top, each of the topics, high-level topics, and they're about an hour and a half. I have not attended the ones for public libraries, I've attended the ones that are for state staffs to help you guys. But the ones I've attended have been very interactive, we actually have to do stuff over there, darn, I can just like, oh. So that's, that's very helpful. And then the other thing they do is, once you've completed the assessment, and you start selecting the things you want to work on, there's a link to your resources. So at least you're not like trying to start on your own to try and find things on how to make that next step, or the first step, or whatever. So again, and the other piece of this too, is I can always come back, or we can, you know, meet up somewhere as a group, and I can, you know, if you've got questions, or you've like gone through the assessment, or we can do a phone consult, I mean, whatever works. We go through the assessment, and you say, "I'm really curious about how I can do better here, or how our library can meet this indicator, what are some of the resources?" Okay? So at any point if you get stuck, I'm here to help. The other piece of this too, is the national group has a very nice online documentation. So if you're familiar with the concept of like knowledge bases, you've probably seen those sometimes on support sites, it's like that. So they have all like, like the real most common questions, and then if you still need help, you can submit a ticket, and somebody gets back with, back to you within two business days. And they've been extremely responsive, because I've had questions for them too. Okay, does that answer your question, Perry?
Mostly, yeah, I'd be looking for some reading of lesson plans or activity sheets and the resources.
So for like the curricula and stuff? Okay, that's a good one. I'll look and see, and we can, and we'll find out, and if not, I can find some for you. All right, so, let me go back to, I think that was all I wanted to show you about that. So, you go through and you take the assessment, and you're going to get a report back. And you can view it online, or you can also download the PDF version of it and take a look, just like you did, you know, with the questions, and now you've got your scores. And that looks like, what does that look like? Oh, that's not very helpful. All right, so you'll get this kind of front page piece that describes kind of about the edge and understanding your results and the overall score. Let me take a look. So, for example, kind of a small screen, here we go. So each, there we go. So there's the community value, which is the high-level strategic area, and then there's the benchmarks. And then there'll be the points that you actually scored on, okay? And then what I like to do, basically, when I work with a library or a group of libraries, is I'll do kind of like a percentage on this sheet, just to kind of get a feel for where things are going really well, where there's a lot of room to do different things, or there's an area that you just want to fine-tune. And again, you know, nothing says that you have to work on the area that you're scoring lowest, that's not necessarily the point. You want to just make sure that what you are doing makes sense for your community. Okay? And this is just kind of a guide to say, "Hey, this is going well, and maybe because there's high demand for this, you should do more of this." Okay? Not necessarily that you're going to get 100% on all of this, because that doesn't happen for any library. Okay, does that make sense? And then, the other piece of this is, you'll see there's these level one, level two, and level three attributes. So level one is kind of considered the basic level of service. Level two is a higher level of service, and level three. So, you know, we'd have the best, grandest, most perfect library in the world if everybody was achieving all level threes in all of the areas. That's all that means. Not that that's what we would do, but just to kind of give you an idea. Okay?
And I also say on that, if you did this, some of the level threes, we looked at them, and I looked at them, and I was like, "That's a really basic level of service for my community."
Right. Exactly, that's a very good point, right? So the comment was that you might score really high at some level three items, because those are just considered must-dos for your community, that's just a given. So again, you know, keep in mind, this is all done kind of on a national basis, right? And this is very customizable to your particular library. And then down below, you can get the detailed level of each of the questions that you answered. Okay? So you get the score. So when we were talking earlier about the curricula that the library provides on basic digital literacy lessons, right? And then you can actually see that, yes, this library does them, so it got some good scores. You know the thing I hate about the sample report? Is that none of them say, "No, we're not, we're not going to do this." That's not the point! So, so you'll get just pages and pages of this. And again, I can take a look, I probably will take a look. One of the things that's nice about this is that as each library completes the assessment, I can take a look at the scores, I can take a look at what's going on statewide, and use that to say, between that and what libraries decide they want to do, I can say, "Oh, we should do training on this for library staff across the state." That's my ultimate dream, to help you guys get there. It's going to be a while, because I've got to get you all to do all your data first. Like, I'll look at all the data, and then I've got to say, "Hey, I need money to do this," and kiss up to my boss. Okay. Anything else around kind of the report, taking the assessment, doing the report, looking at the report, anything else on this? It goes on for quite a bit, but it's great because you get a lot of information. Something new this year are called the peer comparison reports. And I haven't taken a close look at these, but the idea here is that smaller-sized libraries can compare their results with other small, similarly-sized libraries, or medium-sized libraries, or large libraries, right? So this can be helpful, because you can kind of see, you know, if I'm a library that's serving 5,000, what are my peers doing? And again, it's just more information, it's not that you should do. It's just like, "Oh, my peers, my other, other libraries of my size in my state, they're doing these things, I wonder if that would make sense for my library." Okay? So lots of data to help you make some decisions. I think I have an example, but I won't be very good at explaining it. Oh, I remember now. So, they do the peer comparison at two levels for you. So at one level, let's see, there we go. Oh, it's the world's tiniest mouse, okay. So, you can see that in the first column are the points that your library scored. Can you guys see that okay? And the middle is the average of your peers, and then how many points possible in the ideal situation. Okay? And so they do that at a high level, which I think in a lot of ways is probably the most useful. And then they also do it at the attribute level, so all of those little things that you actually scored, you can also take a look at. And that probably comes in useful if you've decided already in advance that you know you're going to work on meeting key community needs, and you could look to see what your peers are doing really well in that area, and that might be, again, something you, would make sense for you to do then, if they've had success at it and they're similar size, maybe. Okay? Any questions on the reporting?
I'll just add that the peer group that we fell into was 15,000 to 65,000.
Wow! That's, you know what?
That's huge.
That is huge. Let me? See, this is good, no, because I am, I'm like this, I'm one of the gals that does this stuff, and I don't know, and I'm like, you know, it's going around there.
Yeah, they especially do this stuff.
Yeah, exactly, or the budget, right? Because if you've got a higher tax levy, you know, level, then you probably have a little more resources, not just staff, but stuff.
I wonder if it has to do with how much data is, and if more data gets in there, maybe they can break up the groups more.
That's a good point. Yeah, that could happen. And again, you know, our little library that I begged to have, do the national sample to prime the pump was Agnes. Do you guys even know where Agnes is? Or, yeah, yeah, you would. So, and they did it. Pretty darn close, if not the smallest, Amity might be real in there too.
They're like 100.
Yeah.
I suggested that they have some kind of a population per square mile algorithm in there.
Ah. You know, and see, this is good, because, you know, you get west of the Mississippi, and you do get these larger areas, and they don't think that way on the other side, you know, they just don't. The other thing, oh, I should mention that when you, if you decide to download and print the assessment, don't feel overwhelmed. Small libraries can usually finish it in about two hours, you know, because you're just kind of saying, "No, no, no, maybe, yes, no, 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 maybe, yes," right? Which is fine, okay? And then the medium to larger size could take three or four hours, like Multnomah County, and that's where they actually, you know, "You're doing these three sheets, you're doing those two sheets, I'm doing these three," you know, they divvied up the work, right? So however that process works for your individual library, that might be you doing it all, you might split it up with somebody, right? All right, any questions from the folks online using GoToMeeting? So, it's great to have all that data and get your scores, but it doesn't do you any good if you don't take action. And this is the piece where I'm willing to come out again and help you guys, or do the phone thing. And Edge has some great things to help you with this too. This is where the live webinars come in, right? Because they'll talk about the various strategic areas and some of the benchmarks, and what you can be doing around those areas. And so this is a point where you kind of review the recommendations, start doing some training, call up Darcy, say, "Oh, I don't know what to do next." And then you're going to, you're going to create a plan. Okay? My goal for the state in the next two years is to get 100% participation on the assessment. That's my goal. And I will drive out to a library until it's done, if I happen to, but that's the aim. I mean, really, because again, that data's going to help the state library, as well as the individual libraries that partake in the assessment. And then out of all of that, I'd like to see every library, or 80% of the libraries somewhere in there, do at least one training. Because I honestly believe that if you're deciding to do something, even just attending a training and getting that one gold nugget to act upon, that's a success to me. Okay? And then, and then I would love to see half the libraries create an actual plan and act on it. Okay? So that's kind of where I'm aiming. Actually have like, hopefully, outcome-based objectives that I'm going to try and do across the state, but we'll see how that goes. All right? So the plan, again, you can use the online tool, which will line up, you know, one-on-one with all of the assessment pieces you did, so it'll be really clear that you are working on this, but you're not working on these other things. Or if you want to come up with your own plan. One way you could do it is use the online plan as the initial draft, and then if you're working on a strategic plan, and you want the technology piece to be part of that strategic plan, you could just float those pieces into that, and then your strategic plan becomes your working document. Okay? If you don't want to do a strategic plan, or you don't want to include this piece in your strategic plan, you can use the online one and update that. You can say, "In progress, completed, changed my mind, Darcy won't answer my calls," whatever you need to put in there, right? Okay? So planning is important, but then actually following up on that plan. And the Edge Toolkit does some really great things to help you with this. It can't actually do it for you, unfortunately, but those of you that have been in your communities for a while, you know who your primary partners are, you might try and explore some ideas for some additional partners, some people you haven't thought of before. So you want to bring in those local leaders and other community partners to help you succeed. Because we all know that in this day and age, nobody can do this stuff on their own. It's just, you don't have enough money, you don't have enough time, you don't have enough staff. So, you know, how can you leverage what you do have to create some successes? Okay? So, a couple of things that they do that are concrete, and I actually have an example one, is based on, especially I believe using the online plan, I really encourage that was initially, because the plan online is able to create this really nifty, what they call a leap behind. And I'll also bring a version online too, but this, they'll auto-generated, often generate it for you, so it's kind of like a J-Book app, based on the side you're going to do. So you go and you talk to the council, or you talk to a group of potential stakeholders or funders, and you say, "This is what our library is going to do, and this is how we'd like to do it, and this is how you can help us do that." So it's very specific. People often want to help, but if you just say, "I want your help," that doesn't, they can't do anything with that. So you need to let them know exactly how they can help you, and something like this can help you do that. So let me bring on the online version. Let's see. What is it called? Oh, I might not have, I apologize to those online, I might not have downloaded that PDF. If I have time at the end of my presentation, I'll try and bring up the online version from the website, but I remember having a fun time trying to find it. Sorry about that. But basically, it's a nice one-pager that highlights three of the items, I believe it is, that the libraries are gonna work on, and how they can get, what kind of help they want around those ideas. Okay? The other thing they do is they provide two PowerPoint templates that are ready to go, so that you want to do a more formal presentation to a group of folks, then you just kind of go through this, and it tells, it already gives you some really nice, really nice talking points, okay? Again, this is just kind of a guide, all right? You'll know your audience, you'll know what you're trying to achieve, so you can customize this any way you like. But it's kind of nice, because it's got some nice little graphics in here that you can fiddle with, and, you know, so you're not starting from scratch. I hate starting from scratch. So just a way to get started if you're not very good at doing presentations or coming up with that initial way to talk to people. So they have this one, and they have another one. And one thing I mentioned at the conference when I presented on this is that feel free to drop, you know, name drops sort of, and say, "This is a national program. The Oregon State Library's paying for it. They're providing consulting resources. We're getting free training. We've got online tools." You know, so you've got all of the support, you're not just kind of going, "Oh, look what we're gonna do," right? You're serious, and you've got serious help. So make that part of your presentation, and say, "This is a national effort, Public Libraries of America, the Urban Library Council, these folks have worked very hard over the last year and a half to create this program. Libraries all across the country are doing it." So use that to your advantage. So again, these are general talking points, but you can tailor them to your specific needs and actions, all right? Uh-oh. How do I get out of this one? Great. Let's get back down to, there's another one, but I won't show you, it's very similar. All right, so I believe, right. Oh, also, there's a two-sided fact sheet about the Edge initiative, if you want to leave that with the people you talk to as well, so that they know you're not making stuff up. I don't know why would they even think that, but I think people think I make stuff up. So what else? Right. Any questions about the presentation tools, talking points, infographic? The other thing I should mention is if you don't like that infographic, I don't know if you guys know this, but there are all kinds of free or low-cost online infographic generators. You guys know about this? Oh, yeah. And so you can get your Edge data in an Excel spreadsheet, yeah, pop that data into this online infographic thing, and it'll come out and tell you that, you know, compared to our peers, we have a long way to go, and we think this would be of value to our community. You know, so you can get some data to back up your talking points and make it your own infographic. I will try and come up with some examples for that, if that's something you're interested in. Okay? So again, the training and support, kind of mentioned this before, there'll be regularly scheduled seminars, webinars, call me, call me, call me, email me, come visit me, make me come visit you, all that good stuff. And then, of course, their online HelpDust support, which I found very useful, okay? So you don't have to do this alone. Also, talk to each other, I'm sure you guys do that anyways, right? So, but, you know, it's like, hey, I did the assessment, I'm coming out here, and how did you do, and what are you thinking you'll be doing? You know, have those conversations. And then just when you thought you were all done, you can retake the assessment to see what areas you've improved in, okay?
How often, or how long?
I wouldn't do it more than once a year, unless you've got some really, just a few short-term goals, you know? But, you know, nine to 12 months, depending on what you're planning on doing, I would say. Buzzi, what do you, have you guys kind of looked at retaking it?
Yeah, annually.
No.
No, just still working on it. Yeah, so, and actually, this is something new, you know, so all of this stuff, all of the software behind the website that you're using has been developed from scratch, more or less, right? So initially, you couldn't even retake the assessment, so that's something new. The peer reports are new, and they're always maintaining the webinars based on feedback. So by the way, if you attend a webinar that's really great, let them know. If you attend a webinar that's really crappy, let them know, but tell them what you would have found more useful. And I'm not always talking about presentation style, because sometimes people, some people are better at doing live webinars than others, but really around the content. If you're not finding the content helpful, then that's something to definitely let them know, okay? Because we're paying a pretty penny for this, and it's your tax dollars at work as well, right? So let's make sure we're getting good service. So just to kind of wrap it up, the benefits of participating, it lets you know where you're at with your technology and your technology programs and services. I think that's really key, because we get so busy with the day-to-day, and we think we're doing what we should be doing. It's always good to just kind of take a moment, figure out what it is you're actually doing, and what else there might be. And that's the other great thing about the assessment, it's like a smorgasbord. There's things in there that you might not have thought of doing that would be useful, right? That's the other way to look at it when you're taking the assessment, like, "Oh, I didn't know about that idea, that's a great one." And then it helps you identify those ways to strengthen what you're doing, already doing, or new things that you should be doing, right? And then it will help you engage with the stakeholders and funders, and that's really key. I think if you try and go at this alone, and that's the scary part, but that's the important part, right? To really reach out to people and get that help. Something else I was just gonna mention, and it came and went. I think that's about it. Any questions? Any concerns? Are you guys interested?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay.
Speaker and remember, you know, have any others in Sage?
You know, I didn't look. I can report back towards the end of the meeting if you like, I can get online and take a peek and see who's doing what. I know, who are the 11, like Multnomah, of course, because they were actually participating in the early stages. Some of the Link folks in Clackamas County have started, I think Deschutes has started, but may not have finished. Yeah, so, you know, and it's like anything else, you'll decide that this is important enough to spend some time on, something might come up and interrupt you, and that's fine, and you'll go back to it, right? But again, if there's something that's keeping you from doing it about the tool itself, or you need help or ideas or whatever, that's where I can help fill in that gap. I really want to stress that point, that you don't have to, you know, struggle alone.
I'm looking to have to get back to the screen. I've taken the assessment.
Excellent. Right. So, and yeah, again, you know, and, yeah, I mean, like, I'm having a phone call next Friday with Albany Public. They're like, you know, one of the things that I was asked about was like, "So I've taken the assessment, but I'm not sure what to do next, and I want to know how to get my staff involved," because that's key, right? Because you can't do a lot of this stuff without your staff by you. So, you know, some ideas are to have a planning session with your staff, and oftentimes it's helpful to have somebody from the outside facilitate that. And, you know, and I'm gonna brainstorm with Albany and, you know, and see what, you know, learn a little bit more about her staff and find out, you know, what are the strengths of her staff, what are some, you know, potential obstacles there, and, you know, how can we help them? And maybe it's, you know, maybe one of the things is they all decide on one, you know, after reviewing the assessment, they all decide to attend one of the webinars together. You know, oftentimes, you know, doing a webinar by yourself isn't always the best. I mean, it's better than nothing, but, you know, if you get two or three people at the same time and then discuss it during or after, get those ideas flowing from what you've learned, that can be really helpful. So yes, we start on July 1st, so if you have not completed the assessment, which I think only two of you here have, if you started it or never registered, you can start on July 1st. If you took the assessment and completed it, you still have access to everything. Okay? You just go to libraryedge.org, you click the sign-in or register, it should be pretty, you click, and then they send you an email with your library username and your password. You go in there, and you sign in, and a big scary assessment starts looking at you right in the face.
Is it public libraries or academic?
It's public and tribal. Yeah. Yeah, it's not really suitable for academic, because they have a very different audience and different goals quite often, right? They're doing a lot around instruction and research and things like that.
Special library members?
No, we don't. Pretty much the state library doesn't support special libraries in general, yeah. Good question, thank you.
We do have those in Sage.
Yeah, good point.
Well, that's one that I've seen. Professional, these are the ones that are recommended. And tribal libraries, they are covered.
If they want to, yes. Yeah, we have to do a little futzing around, because they do this to make sure every library's unique in the database. It's based off your SDIS number, or whatever that stupid number is.
Whatever.
Right. Tribal libraries don't have that number, but they can make fake ones for them for that, so. But yeah, it's really great, because they know all about you through that number already, right? Not all about you, where you wouldn't need to take the assessment, but they know of you in enough detail. Anything else? So I would encourage you to go to libraryedge.org, poke around, sign up, even if you don't think you're gonna do the assessment right away, just get in there and take a look, okay? And in about three months, I'm gonna bug you if you haven't done the assessment. Any questions from the folks online? Excuse me. Point one? Point two? I'm off the hook, yay!
Thank you, Dr.
Oh, thank you.
All right, pull your...
Oh, yeah.
I think that's it.
Great.
Okay. Let me just make sure people are still with us. And next on our agenda is the State of Sage report discussion. Brett and Beth.
It's already, it's on, yep. I actually have a slide show in one of those other backgrounds rather than the Google block itself. It might be in that other tab.
Would you like to take a break before we go into this part?
Yeah. No. Think this.
I'm here, it's the same two page.
Online, those folks on GoToMeeting, can you see the screen? The Sage presentation?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, I can.
Not even Dia's responding.
Yes, I can see it.
I can see it.
Can someone in GoToMeeting say whether they can see the screen? Should say State of it, Sage Evergreen?
Two people have responded that they can.
Oh, nothing, great. Thank you.
So before I think it's fair, this is the two sheet, one that you can also print out in the little book, we talked about the Edge.
Okay, thanks.
Very quiet.
You have this from like, 14 down, and one of the rooms, which is a staff room, it air condition's down to like, 60 degrees. I'm actually figuring out, and the only way to fix it is to turn the boiler back on, which we really don't want to do, it's like 85 degrees, and why should we be running the boiler?
Seems better.
Staff worker. Well, for most of us, yeah. We have a great returning page back system, too, ours to figure out.
Our sort of, now we engineer, which I have learned means run. I was, I was looking at a billboard, there was a billboard when I was on a Florida cross for some tractors, and said, "Our tractor's a problem with engineering," and I was like, "I will never have a problem with yours." I know how that works.
I don't know if you can, I heard that's a good, city got a dance last year, last time.
Tractors, they're so tired, they're, they pass out, they're so...
Because of where it lies, how it was...
A mangoes go fast, it's one project in Canada.
It's incredible, for sure.
It's mainly what you can't do together, and because we, you know, we used to have a pocket, you know, with just a label, and we also keep a card for, a card for, but trying to find something that'll make it easier, so they're not tight, like, such as cards.
Yeah, I know, there's, it's not a very popular, it's very well, I'm excited.
Yeah.
I like the situation right now there.
It was not easy.
I don't know, she was open, she was, she was, she was pretty, yeah.
Yeah, it was good.
My question, I don't have a pocket, like, I'm very, it's, it's...
And we're still working on this. We take the card now.
It's a lot of work.
The T85.
The Dale card.
I mean, it's really easy.
They might.
I keep, I'm not caring.
Yeah.
Other maintenance.
How many minutes, we did pass that information on, I'm just, I'm just, I'm, we have it in the computer, and only the cap on, you know, you'll find it.
Might be quick.
I don't think I can find it.
I saw it, I knew, I knew, I know, I know.
I'm, 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 I don't know.
It would see that the card, yeah.
Yeah, but you can see it, I don't swear.
I don't think it's there.
Yeah, or I might do, yeah.
In the, in the, yeah, it's not, no, it's, maybe I can...
I can shake it, shake it.
Yeah, it's a note, it's a shape that I can show.
Right, yeah.
Find out.
She said public, she said that.
I need to do it, too.
And one wasn't there, you're fucking...
They asked for you, because they...
I'm tired of the second one.
How is it?
It's a big deal.
Yeah.
Especially we can't, we have to, we have to, in case, by this, so...
No, they can hear us.
Oh, okay.
Can't hear them.
Our speakers working, so I don't know.
That one is a lot of work.
Is your mic banned or something?
No, they can hear us.
Oh, okay.
Can't hear them.
Our speakers working, so I don't know.
I gotta call up them, no.
Dia says, "Just so you know, I can hear the speaker really well when they are right in front of the mic, however, when it, when they move away, it's more difficult to hear them." Also, it's not easy to hear people in the room when they're making comments. Well, we're on break right now, so that should clear up.
Or is that muted?
No, that's on. If it's, if it's blinking, it's muted.
Okay.
Could turn that up.
Okay.
All yours, Sam.
Gonna leave the chat up, or did you want to leave the chat?
Maybe a fake.
I might just move it around.
Since we can't hear him, we can move it around.
Yeah.
Okay. Going to leave the chat up? Or did you want to leave the chat? It'd be a fake. I might just move it around. Since we can't hear them, we can move it around. All right, so.
Hi, everybody.
Hey. So we kind of just did a brief kind of slide deck to go with the presentation on the State of Sage presently. There've been a lot of things going on since the last time we met here, so there's definitely a lot to talk about. So we're just kind of kind of start with the patron survey.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, and we'll share this slide deck too with you guys because it has interactive links as well on it. So.
Thank you to all those libraries that encouraged their patrons to fill out the survey. Gave us some good feedback.
So, yeah, we got a fair amount of responses, about 192. And you can, if you want to write that down, even go and look at it as well. But overall, looking at the responses, they were pretty positive overall in aggregate.
We had a, it was a 4.25 out of 5. Just on, yeah, yeah.
So kind of just some takeaways that I grabbed from the, or we grabbed from the survey were that patrons, when they said they were, how they were interacting with the catalog, it was primarily outside of the library, actually. Which I was kind of surprised that it was overwhelmingly outside of the library as it is. And that they're using it pretty frequently. It was either more frequently, or sorry. Yeah, it was at least once a week and then there were also attendees that were doing that more. And that was the, the most heavily weighted section of the responses. They can find what they're looking for generally on the first try in the catalog. I think the reason cited for them not being able to find it was that it was either not held by a member library or. I think that was.
Yeah, and, and what I noticed in the survey results was that those who responded to the survey and very seldom use the catalog seemed to have less successful results. They were, those were the ones that seemed to be more unhappy about their experience. So whether it was just the fact that they weren't comfortable or familiar with the catalog and didn't know how to use it might have been the reason that they couldn't find what they were looking for. There's always room for improvement, but having their comments at least guides us in some directions we can go. I noticed that there were several comments that they wanted it to be more like Google. Which I'm sure we've heard that a lot, but I think that they were, if they didn't type in the author's name correctly, misspelled it, they didn't get the search results they wanted. And, and so they wanted it to be more forgiving as far as the, the search. So, I mean, something we can work on, there's, there's browse lists that are available that maybe we can direct them to if they don't have a successful search. We can say, hey, you know, try this. And maybe they would be able to find their author's name in that list rather than having to type it in. So we'll still use that feedback to kind of guide some extra things we can do in the catalog to make their searches more successful. No, there is a, there is a page that comes up when you don't get any search results. And on that page, we're thinking we could add some links to kind of guide them. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, when you're typing, we have the, the auto suggest in right now, so it will look at indexed. I think with title and author field. But if, if it's.
If it's way off, it's hard to have that auto suggest help them, but working, continue to work on things.
If you do redirect, it'd be nice to have some kind of a button or something very visible that they can get back to catalog. Because they know when they get it to get off into Google. A lot of times I'll go past our own packs and they're sitting on that and then we have to use a, you know, get it back.
Yeah, this would all be within the same system, at least what we're suggesting.
So that actually you can set up your workstation to do that. So you can install, use Firefox, you can use extensions that will automatically reset the browser after a certain period. Yeah. And it's like, so we have ours, they reset after like two minutes.
Next slide.
Yeah, that was the patron survey.
Just wanted to talk about some things that we've already done based up on the survey. People were asking a lot for series, so we've made a concentrated effort to add more series information into the records. We've made it more visible in the display. Currently, we've got some funding with the grant, some extra monies in the cataloging grants. So we're having a couple people, that's all they're doing is adding in series and fixing series in records. Item summaries was another thing that was frequently mentioned in the survey. They wanted to, to know what the items were about, the plot summaries. And so those are being added to the record as well. And I've moved the display closer to the top so that they can see it more easily. It was displaying farther down on the detail page. So I think it'll be more visible and so a tangible outcome of the survey. More cover images, I'm enjoying all of the, at least more images than we had before with our new subscription. And we now have the ability to limit by fiction and nonfiction in our search limits.
Yeah. And with those cover images as well, with this upgrade that we performed on right, right before the conference. We also have the ability to get those cover images through the O20 fields, so ISBNs, which were common, but also the O24s. So if you have UPC numbers or something like that for DVD box sets or something that might not otherwise have ISBNs, it will look at that. And if you some, if you don't see that jacket displaying, do a quick peek at the mark and just make sure that there are O20s or O24s and that those are the correct ones. Because generally, not all the time, but generally that's the case where they're not displaying.
I didn't have time to verify, but somebody mentioned that the juvenile limiter was missing after the upgrade. Is that something that's custom we have?
Oh, like in the advanced search?
Yeah, the advanced search.
It is something that we can turn back on. One of the problems with that juvenile search and, and it comes back to cataloging is that not everybody is coding that fixed field. And so your search results are kind of deceptive in a way. What I did just do yesterday or the day before is I added a Sage-wide juvenile limit within, underneath, I don't know, we can show you later on the catalog website, but where you limit by library, there is now a subcategory under the Sage library system that says Sage juvenile materials. And it's actually based upon everybody's copy locations that are juvenile in nature. So I'm hoping that that'll be a more comprehensive search limit. I'm also going to do that for young adults as well. And if there's any other limits that you guys want, just let me know and we'll add it.
You know, if you look in the kids' OPAC right now, you'll notice it has, when you search, it has the option to delay by full collection, young adult children's materials. And that is primarily based on the audience value of the fixed field. So if that's missing or wrong, it can sometimes skew the results.
Some more things that we're planning on doing, improving search relevancy. Patron instructions, that was another thing we saw in the survey where they really needed help on doing different things in the catalog. So we'd like to provide some instructions for them to do that. Browse lists, format and genre, another thing that was asked. Online payment, that is possible within the Evergreen system. And so we want to work with libraries that are interested in turning that on for their libraries. And also, like I talked, the search limits for juvenile and young adult. I kind of jumped ahead and did one of those already, but I'll be increasing the number of limits that we have.
And those limits are based on.
Yes.
And the, the link on online payment was just to the new form that was added with the upgrade, which is for a protocol called Stripe, which you might have seen if you're out and people are swiping their cards through their iPads or it's either Square or PayPal or Stripe, another one of those. And it's nice because it holds the information outside.
Yeah.
Outside of us, so we never, no credit card information gets stored anywhere in Sage, so it's.
It's all separate and the money would go to whatever account you guys set up in your library. You would set up your own Stripe account. And so if your patrons pay overdue fees or so on, it would go into your account.
Yeah, so conference was great. I had, it was very, I mean, Buzzy can certainly speak to it, it was very intense. There was a lot of planning and involved in meetings and a lot of wrangling and all that, getting it together. But Buzzy did a great job and so did Beth and everyone else who was on the team. So we were well represented. It was, there were a lot of, I was real happy to see a lot of Sage member staff that were actually in attendance. Like right here, we had Perry and Buzzy was there and he and me and some people from the DOWs as well and.
Gilliam.
Gilliam County. Hutter Valley High School, yeah. And so, yeah, we, we had a lot of, we, it was really good on a personal level to just get to talk with the people that are building the software. So it, we're usually just interacting with them in a chat room and it's nice to actually grab someone and say, hey, why doesn't that work or thanks for, thanks for doing that fix. Some of the sessions we attended, log analysis, which is kind of, kind of boring to talk about, but it's basically, it was a good provider. When things are not going as they should, kind of various measures that we can use in the backend to filter through what could be happening in live time, real time. Floating collections, which is great because that, at that session, right, right now, is it Hutter River and Baker primarily? They're floating some of their stuff. There was, it was a great session, helped us with an issue we'd been having. Bug reporting, which kind of plays into that. Every time if we're working with something and we're not able to figure out what exactly is causing the issue, we don't think it's on our end or on the, you know, the libraries. And kind of the methods we use to report a bug online and how that goes to the developers and how we can track how much heat, as I was saying earlier, it's been getting, how many people are saying they're affected by it. I've submitted several bugs, they've been got, we had one fixed for the self-check. And yeah, it was just, it was, it was great. The receipt printing session was also super great. I didn't go to, get to go to it, but I talked to the presenter. And in the link, it's also to various, it links out to various templates and printer settings. If you want to kind of fancy up your, your checkout receipts or hold slips or things like that. Kind of just going off that, I, I did a presentation at the conference with a systems person from Pibbly Ovation over on the East Coast. And this is a picture of Hutter River's self-check upstairs, kind of an overview of what it could look like. That's the address presently right now. When you do go to it, it will ask you to set up a workstation, which is similar to when you're setting up a workstation normally on any of the circulation computers. And just name it something, you know, like LaGrante self-check upstairs or something like that that you'll know to look at if you ever want to run a report off it. And there's also, we can help you with some real simple reports that we're also going over. If you want to kind of see what your circulation is like through your self-check as opposed to your, your cert, your normal circ desk. So right now, the way it works is we, you can have a patron go up and if they want to log in with their barcode or if they have a different username, so like if my barcode is 278, duh, 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 and my name is Brent, I can log in with no password and either of those, fine, I can scan it or I can type it in.
Now, the password setting, Brent, is, that's a library setting, right?
That is a library.
Individual by library, so whether you decide to have a password or not is your library choice.
Yeah. And if they just want to log in with their username, so I could log in with Brent and my secret password, then I can get in. But right now, if you want to log in with your barcode and your password, it will not allow you to do that at present. And that is a, a bug that we verified. It has to do with how they split up the authentication of the passwords, but this, I think this Sage default is when you type in the barcode, when you scan it in the field and you tab, I think it generally auto completes for the username field, doesn't it?
Yes. When you're, when you're registering a patron for the first time, the barcode and the username are the same. So a lot of your patrons are going to have them be, continue to be the same. Only if they've gone to the extra work of setting up a username, would it be impacted.
Yeah, so if they hadn't changed it since they got their card, you wouldn't know that it's just looking at that other field, but it would go through if you wanted to use passwords.
I will say, especially if you're not going to use passwords on your self-check, we use touchscreen on ours. We have found it infinitely easier to not give a patron any access whatsoever. Keyboard.
Yeah.
The keyboard problem is terrible. How can you get a touchscreen so much easier?
Actually pretty cheap though.
Yeah, yeah, and that one we bought was, I don't know, maybe two pointy. That was like.
We have ours through mono price.
Fine.
Super cheap electronics, it was like less than a hundred bucks for a touchscreen. And it's cracking, and it works kind of crappy, but it worked.
But it's, 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 it's pretty great. And we also have, I know Hutter River and Lakeview have some kind of customized receipts as well to spit out their logo and kind of some stylized text as well on the receipt printer.
Which I almost said, we have very, very small percentage or subject pages. You work at 10%.
Yeah.
And when they're.
Yeah, when they log out, they have the option to either log out with no receipt or if they just hit log out, it will automatically spit out a receipt.
Okay, with this new version of the software, format icons are no, we no longer have to do our special fix that we had in place with the 999 subfield F. Now it bases the format icons on the fixed fields. And so it's important to get those fixed fields in your catalog record correct. Otherwise, your icon will not display. But it's much nicer now that we're not having to do a workaround and we're actually working with the record as it is. So I'm, I'm very happy. It took a little, it took a few days for us to get our custom icons to display instead of the default ones, but we're back in business and things are displaying correctly.
That's kind of like a little, you can go to that page if you want to see how it actually decides what is a book and what is a video and what is audiobook. It kind of looks at those fields and if it matches those criteria sets. That's the default Evergreen book item, what it would look like. And I believe ours are a lot nicer.
Ours are nicer, yes.
Do templates need to be edited to take out the 999?
The mark.
It won't affect it at all. I mean, but yes, we will change those.
Yeah, the default mark templates, like when you're creating a new record, don't have the 999F anymore. They do have the 999E, which I think David sent an email about earlier. Which is still important to add to records. Which is still important to add to records. So I've been working the last few days with something we got from the conference, which is these sliders that we've been wanting, kind of Amazony and like some other libraries have as well. So we've got it set up now that we have manual and autoload lists. I'm not sure if you've ever tried to make a book list in your, in Evergreen. If you go to your, your user account, and you kind of look in the OPAC, you can, there's a tab, you lists. So that, what this is doing is it is dynamically grabbing information from the database and dumping it to one of those lists. So actually, if you are a library that maybe wants to display your, you know, the newest items in for Baker, what you would do is go to some Baker circ on the catalog, create a little list, don't even put anything in it. All you have to put in the description field is new items. And every time I run the script, it'll automatically push in 100 of the newest items from Baker into there. And so that'll always be there, but from there, we can put it into these sliders. And it's right now on the kids' OPAC page. And these are the, kind of the auto-loading options that we have at present. So items, the 100 newest items for either, I didn't put it in here, but 100 newest items for either Sage or your library. So if your list that you make is for Baker, it will show Baker's 100 newest items, Hood River, Hood River's newest 100 items. The newest YA books and the newest kids' books. Those are also based on any, any book that's been cataloged, that's been put into the kids' or young adult copy location. So anything YA, kids', children's, it won't grab anything that has adult or something like that.
So I need to sit down in front of a computer on the web browser to go to the catalog page for MyOnline or just the catalog?
We're, we're going to put the slider on the main catalog page, but what Brent was talking about was the ability for you guys to have individual lists on your web browser or...
Yeah, if you usually did like a, you know, newest genre, or newest sci-fi links or something like that, you can have it in a kind of ready-formatted thing within Evergreen, so they just have to click placehold, and it's a nice, nicer display.
I think we could do a blog post about this and kind of describe it a little bit and, and give steps to you guys as to what to do. Like you said, it's already on the K-Pak, and we could bring that up and show you. We're also going to put it on the, the regular catalog, the catalog.sage.uu.edu, as well as we're going to put it on the new website for Sage.
And you can also, if you want to have a manual slider, like a highlighted list of, you know, anything you can think of, really. Books you want to highlight, there's a manual options as well. These are just the ones that are automatically fed. Yeah.
How many items are in the slider?
You can set that. It's right now set to eight in the slider, and I'm working with it because it's trying...
What do you mean? Okay, you mean eight showing at, at one time? But you can hit the arrows and more. I think he's talking about total quantity?
Yeah, total.
Oh, 100. Yeah. There's 100 for the newest catalog, and then the last two weeks is 100. Generally, like 100 is a good number to not kind of overwhelm the database with constantly querying it if it has to. But we can bump that up, too. And I'm working with getting it kind of to look a little nicer in the web, sage lib.org site, because it's kind of meant to live in Evergreen, and taking it out of Evergreen takes a little bit more work. But I think, I think it looks pretty great, and if you don't see a book jacket cover, look at those O2Os, O24s.
And there are some, some things that just don't have an image stored out there. And, and what it does, if there's no image, it still displays the title down below, it's just there's a blank space. And I was playing with the slider that was on the kids' catalog, and I wasn't really seeing too many that came up without an image, so it was encouraging.
What is displayed when there's no image, just no image available?
No, it just has, just, it's like a white, you know?
White box.
White box, and it has the title down below, so they can still see the title and without an image. But I think all of our new stuff is, is coming with titles, with coming, with coming with cover images, pretty much.
Yeah.
And this is just a, you know, some projects that we thought of for the current, the upcoming years. Really want to get our locations and former libraries out of the list. It kind of plutters things, and so doing cleanup on that is one of the projects planned for this year. We also like to reorganize the report templates, divide things out a little bit more, so it's easier to find reports that you need. And also work on customized receipts and notices, and experiment with the fulfillment module. The fulfillment module is an ILL module that allows us to potentially communicate and borrow things from other systems around the state. And so we'd like to download that software and start working with it, see if we can get, and, and also solicit other organizations that maybe want to try a pilot project with us to borrow.
Yeah. And if you do notice anything strange maybe with reports or searching, like also just let us know, because there has been a little bit of cruff we've kind of discovered from the libraries first came on, it's just kind of been hidden. And we're like, oh, figured that out. But, yeah, so just keep letting us know what's going on.
And just a slide to say we still need your input on things that you'd like us to work on in the coming year, priorities for your library that are a part of Evergreen and you'd like our help on. The other thing that recently, we made lots of changes with moving from the Wiki to a new Sage website that's built off of Drupal. It has both a public and a staff interface, and so we're just going to show you guys that real quick. We've also moved to a new support ticketing system and a new chat system, so lots of changes all at one time, but I think all changes for the better. A lot more powerful, a lot more capabilities than we had before.
We've also, just a few days ago, put up all our, we have a public repository for all our template changes. You can actually see, if you really want to, what the actual code looks like, so we're not, it's all, it's all in the open, if you want to see it. I think that's it.
Yeah. So how many of you have gone to the new website? Wow. Thank you for those who have. The rest of you need to visit us and give us feedback.
Oh, it's private, Preston.
Thank you, guys, and it's very insane for you to have Drupal on your master's program. It's great.
It, it, well, it is a big learning curve, and I spent hours and hours in front of the computer. It did help that I took a Drupal class in my master's program. So I got to practical application of, of stuff I learned, but Drupal is very powerful. There's lots of modules that you can get to come alongside, and so it's worth it.
Why do you say that, Buzzy?
It's challenging on the backend. Or they just compare it to something like WordPress.
There are tons of things you can do with it.
Not for the faint of heart. But yes, there are tons of things you can do with it. So this is what the public sees currently. We're planning on replacing the map with the slider and having a link to the map. Anybody sorry to see the map go? Okay.
I think it's nice to have me about us, please.
Yeah.
Taking up...
Taking up valuable real estate. Yeah, so we're, we're going to put a slider of new items where the map is.
But will there be like a very small version of the map, maybe somewhere still visible?
You know, I was gonna...
And they can link to that.
Oh, no, link?
To just the words.
Oh, just to, you, you want not the words?
Well, no, I...
I was gonna put link Sage map.
Yeah, okay. As long as they said word map, they know how to get there, and they know it was just about that.
So they'll still be able to reach it, we'll still have the content there. For those of you who haven't experienced the map before, basically you just hover over it, and it gives you the ability to, you can click on it, and it will take you to information about the library. It's like a batch Geo application. The other thing...
So we also, just a kind of brief run-through, we've got the members, and please let me know, I've tried to, the information's kind of disparate in the various sources we have, but we've tried to aggregate every single Sage library in here with their links to their hours and other information. And if you think any of that or know any of that's an error, please let us know, so we can update that pretty quickly. Also, in Evergreen now, the upgrade, you might notice when you're searching for a book, and you'll see the library highlighted, like a link. If you click on that, it'll also bring you to an Evergreen styled kind of library information page. It gives you hours.
Is there a way to jump to Alphabet instead of a page in the directory?
In here?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can, what was it? I think it still calls it, oh, jump to a specific.
Yeah, so you wanted to look at the R libraries.
On R?
We have so many libraries.
Yeah, you could, there's probably a way to do that.
I mean, we just had a guest there.
Yeah, what we would have to do is we'd have to add that coding in, but it wouldn't be difficult. Good suggestion. Forget how many of us there are and how long it would take to bounce through the list.
Do you want to do a brief?
It's like five minutes, just to scroll through all the free files.
There are a lot of Sage libraries.
And everybody knows the password, right?
I've gotten better at it.
You've gotten better at it? Okay. If it, if it proves too difficult, we will simplify it, but I'd like to start, okay, this is what staff members see if they log in as staff. You can see that there's an area for forum topics, and we're going to get you guys going with some, hopefully, exciting topics. So you're welcome to participate in the forum. We're gonna, we have blog posts, both, well, Brent, I, and David on the cataloging side will be posting blog entries that you'll be able to see. Right on the front page is the support information, so you know how to reach us. And it has link to the chatroom, and plus menu, menus for all of the different items that were on the Wiki as well. And then you can access the members from this page as well.
Yeah, and the, the fast guides there is kind of that little documentation site that I have. It's supposed to be pretty easy to navigate for if you have a quick new, somebody who's new to Evergreen and wants to figure out what's going on. Also, if you are in Evergreen and you first log into the staff client, under that administration page, where it has help, now the help links to, well, helps, links to that site, so when you click it in Evergreen, it'll bring it up within Evergreen.
Any questions about the new website? Okay, the support site?
Wait, I did have a question.
Okay.
Was all of the past history, the minutes and agendas put in, or is that still?
Not all of it. I mean, I put in so many years' worth, and I, I have the document saved on a CD, and I also archived everything that was on the Wiki as well. I just didn't know how much content you wanted to bring forward to the new website, but it is archived.
I was just mentioning, because I wanted to build a history of Sage officers and then go back that far.
Okay. I can add that if you'd like. Okay. All right. So the new support website is the same, sage lib.org/support, and it takes you to our new ticketing system, which I love. And click on the green button right there to open up a new ticket. The chat, show you that real quick. Basically, you just enter a nickname, so we know who we're talking to, and you're in the chatroom and can talk with other people in Sage. The chatroom has been very empty lately.
There's David, and I think Denise maybe is there for...
Yeah. But anyway...
But is there, if you want to have a group meeting or...
Or just ask a quick question?
Yeah.
And don't want to email us?
That old chatroom's still around, too. For some reason, you like that one as well.
Except I don't know that we're going to be on it.
Yeah, my, well, my thing auto logs in, and it just, it'll blink if somebody messages me, but it's been pretty quiet.
Okay. All right, well, thanks, everybody. I think that's it for our presentation, unless you guys have questions.
Especially quiet, since you can't hear the meeting folks. Let me see if there's any messages that come in. Amy's got to go for another meeting. And said, can questions be re-announced? We're having a hard time hearing questions. Okay, sorry we missed those comments, you guys. All right. Moving on, Buzzy, I kind of sprung this on you without...
Yeah, I noticed that.
Without talking to you beforehand, we can table that until a future meeting, actually.
Thanks.
I mentioned it to, to you, I think, but you were in the middle of Evergreen conference planning, and I don't think you were fully aware.
Lots of things that are clear around, for me to think about.
Oh, no.
All right, so just to wrap up, we'll be having elections virtually, but there really aren't any competing candidates. Do we have write-ins when we do the elections? Yeah, so it'll be the nominated candidates versus write-in candidates, and that'll be it. I don't think we had any...
People that watched after the last writing.
Yes, feel free to do that. We didn't really have any other task assignments that came up, other than the election.
And everybody doing the...
And everyone doing the editing.
Right?
Yes. As, as of the 1st of July. Get right on that.
Can I give the, like, an email, is there like a listserv or a link of emails, so I can send a couple of those attachments and some stuff, or if you pull it online?
You can certainly join the Sage listserv. I'm sure you're not on enough.
You know, I have this great thing, just put it in folders, so actually, that'd be kind of cool.
You know, you're going to have to do it, actually.
Yeah.
Or in State, you know?
Yeah, State, I don't remember.
Okay, so the next meeting items are officer elections, and coming up with the regular meeting schedule, that will really be something I might poll the new representatives about before the July meeting, see what... before the July meeting, see what, if we can come to an agreement about whether to keep the existing structure of the third Tuesday at 10:00 or move it. Any other suggestions for agenda items for the next meeting? Okay. Well, if you think of something, please let me know. And that concludes our business. Is there a motion to adjourn? We don't need to have a motion. So the meeting is adjourned at 3:03 PM. Thanks, everybody.